This is a regular open public meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. On a roll call, please.
I have a few board members present, Mr. Stotts.
I'm sorry.
I see you. Mrs. Rotondo.
Here.
Mr. Tabey.
Here.
Mrs. Marmian.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Butchko.
Here.
We have quorum.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, there's no executive session at this time. On Section 3, we're going to start by mentioning that our school community lost two giants this summer in Chuck Lehman and Diane Sillafont. Chuck Lehman was a lifetime resident of Oakland, councilman, school board member for many years, and was dedicated to the people and community of Oakland. Diane is the Oakland School Secretary for a number of years, and her unwavering loyalty and warm presence as the school's administrative assistant made her the face of OPS. So before we begin, we're going to take a moment just to think about them for a moment of silence. All right, thank you, everyone, for taking the time. I'm going to move on to Section 3.02, and this is a presentation of our mentoring plan. All right, we're going to skip that for tonight. Revisit. We'll pick that up in September. Moving on to Section 4, which is the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to move into Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in Committee of the Whole. Before I open this up to board member comments, I just have a couple of announcements. Many of you may have seen the construction in front of our school, so there will be more information forthcoming, but they're adding new crosswalks. So the crosswalk is going to be adjusted in the morning, which we hope will ease with traffic and especially drop off. So stay tuned for more information on that. And while I'm talking of safe routes to school, just wanted to share an update. Bill has brought up a number of times that the sign for the crosswalk on Newton, where students would from Oakland to crossover to the middle and high school, there was a large tree branch that was blocking the sign, and that has finally been trimmed. So thank you, Bill, for staying on top of that for so long. Is there anything else for Committee of the Whole at this time? All right, hearing none. Motion to come out of Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you all. We are now out of Committee of the Whole. Section 5 is important dates. Biggest date here, September 5th is the first day of school for all students, pre-K through grade 5 here at Oakland, as well as in Collingswood. There is a new family orientation on September 5th here in the school library at 8:45 a.m. The first two days of school are early dismissals, and the next board meeting is on September 17th. Section 6 is the approval of minutes from our June board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Some. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. There's no unfinished business at this time. Section 7 is the first public comment section, so this is for agenda items only. So if you could stand, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Thank you. All right, hearing none at this time. Section 8, pass it over to Dr. McDowell for the superintendent's report.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. 8.01 is the enrollment report. June of 2023 enrollment was 276. As of June 2024, it is 267. The report is attached. 0.2 and 0.3 are the safety drill report and the suspension report for June of this past year. And 8.04, there is none to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Section 9, the business administrator report. Beth Ann.
Okay, as promised, we were able to get July done. I know we discussed in finance, buildings, and grounds. Busy summer, but both June and July, monthly transfer reports are presented tonight in 9.01. And 9.02 are your June and July board secretary, treasurer, and cash reports. 9.03 is the listing of the purchase orders that were issued for Oakland in the month of July. And 9.04 is listing of the warrants. And like in June, I got approved to pay bills throughout the summer, so you've got three different bills listed. You've got June, and you've got July, and then you've got August as of last week. So three different bills listed for your approval. And like I said before, there are two months' worth of financial statements, so we have rolled you into the current year. The audit has been complete, so this will bring you up to date with your financial statements. And with that being said, I'm going to roll into item 10 because Mr. McMillan is not here. So items 10.01 through 10.06 are those items that I just mentioned, the financial statements, the warrants, and the purchase orders. 10.07 is our annual approval of the IDEA grant. So for 2425, we saw a slight increase, about $102,000. 10.08 is approval of our ESEA grant, and as per federal law, we have to list out the employees that are being paid with federal funds and the percentage of their salary that goes to the federal grant, and that's listed. 10.09, 10.10, and 10.11 are all, I consider them mandatory business office-type items. The first one is, I updated the Collingswood and Oakland Purchasing Manual. 10.10 is our standard operating procedures manual, and 10.11 is our 2425 budget calendar for the preparation of the 2526 school year budget. 10.12 is an application for dual use of educational space. So what that means is that we go to the county office if we have, basically, it's one big classroom space, and it's divided by a divider, and there's two sets of instruction going on at the same time. It requires annual county office approval, and in Oakland, we have two such rooms. 10.13 is use of facilities for Oakland's Cougars football. 10.14 is use of facilities for Oakland Little League. And 10.15 is OMACAC over-30 basketball. We did receive some late entries, so they will be on for next month, and that includes the soccer club, if anybody at home is looking late for soccer. We got it after the agenda was live, so it'll be on for September. And that being said, approval of items 10.01 through 10.15.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I have a question or a comment, I guess, on one of them. So OMACAC did submit a request for gym nights, too, which is not on the agenda. I just forwarded it to Beth Ann, so that will be on the September agenda.
Not worried about it. It's in October.
Thank you.
That's what I figured. You know you're going to get the gym, so it's all good. But I do apologize.
Can I torture?
You can do whatever you want, Adam. But no, you'll get it. I'll put it on next month. I apologize.
No problem.
And should we discuss soccer? It did come in late, but they're wanting to start before our next meeting, and it will...
Yeah, according to their request, they want to start September 7th and run through October 28th. I don't have dates, though, so I really, hold on, just, Mondays. Saturdays, Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 11:00, September 7th through October 28th. So if you want to amend those dates or give them, I don't know what you guys want to do, Jezzy came in late.
So is that, so that's Oakland Soccer Club for rec.
Correct.
Collinswood Oakland Soccer Club uses these fields for practice as well as game days on Sundays. Is that a separate item, and has that been approved?
I don't believe we've received that one yet either.
We have not received that. And if you know people, please remind them, because they need to get these requests.
So we have two options. We can amend this. Our September board meeting is, like we said, the 17th, and they can start the week after the 17th, or we let them start, and we just remind them to get their paperwork in overtime. I'll take your lead from you guys, but we do try to keep, you know, to the schedule.
For rec, I'm in favor of letting them start. Open to hear. I did review it, and it looks like everything's in order. It's just the Senate, after the agenda was already posted. But we have not received anything yet for travel, and they're going to have to get that in.
For rec, do we get a certificate of insurance that includes us as an additional insured?
This is, okay. I'm sorry, this is both of them.
Hold on. I don't see, I don't have the full packet in front of me. I just have a copy of an email. So, oh, we do, no.
So that is travel in there also. Sorry, that was a separate request. I got it.
And oddly enough, they want to start tonight without approval. I don't have the full packet in front of me, I just have a copy of the email, so I don't know if the insurance certificate was attached or not. I have to look.
Okay. How about the Cougars? Do we go to revise certificate that includes us?
I do not know. Request was made. Mr. Sinesty's been in it. We, everybody's on vacation this weekend, buildings and grounds, so I have to circle back, but...
Okay.
I want to tell you, though, two seconds after I sent the thing, you sent it to Mike. Mike sent it to me and said, "Don't forget your insurance." I'd already asked Bonnie to send it. Bonnie sent the insurance.
Yeah.
So he's right on it.
Yeah.
And he doesn't mess around.
Well, we got a certificate from the Cougars, too, only it doesn't include us as an additional insured. So the certificate itself is fine. We also get them once in a while that they're expired. So...
Because usually the certificates are annual, and if they're asking in the middle of the season, and then the season runs out, we just have to stand up.
So I think it's really important, Bill, thank you for always being on top of the paperwork, but I don't want the kids to suffer because of paperwork, and these are all organizations that have used the facilities in the past without issue, correct? So I'm, personally, I'm in favor of letting them start and hounding them for paperwork immediately.
I'll talk to CO, I say, too. It looks like it's in here for the travel. It was, it was a separate page. I didn't see that page.
Was attached to the, I think it's the same, it's the same person, so it was stapled together.
Yes. All right. On a roll call, please. Thank you.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, for the Cougars and for soccer, subject to receipt of the appropriate certificates.
What I'll do is I'll put them on next month. You know, we're just letting them start early. Okay. Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian. Yes. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko.
Yes. Thank you all. Section 11, this is the Curriculum and Personnel Committee. Todd, please.
Good evening, everyone. So I am 11.01, is student placement an 11th grader, being placed to attend the Camden County Transition Program for the 2425 school year. Oakland would be responsible for tuition and transportation. That was at the recommendation of the Collingswood High School principal. Item 11.02, we are seeking approval to enter in a contract with the New Jersey Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired to provide services for the 2425 school year for a couple of students that are listed there for those services. Item 11.03, hopefully something we'll never have to look at again, but it's to approve our emergency virtual or remote instruction plan for 2425. Again, we don't want to have to ever reference that, open it, see it, but we have it just in case. Item 11.04, we're looking to approve our English language services, which is a three-year program from '24 to '27, as presented there for you. Item 11.05, we're seeking approval for a paid medical leave effective August 13th through September 20th, or longer if needed. The employee plans to return September 23rd, 2024 pending medical clearance. Item 11.06, we are seeking approval for a contract for Ms. Anduhar, the new school secretary, which would be for the 2425 school year. And item 11.07, seeking approval for our nurse, Mary Hopkins, to work the maximum of four days over the summer at her per diem rate for work that is necessary prior to the start of the school year. So we are seeking approval for items 11.01 through 11.07.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
May have done seconded. Any questions from board members?
Yes, the tuition for the Commission for the Blind, $2,400, is that annually?
Yes, as per pupil, an annual. So we do have one child here in Oakland, yeah.
Great.
Okay, on a roll call.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko.
Yes.
All right, Section 12, this is the Community Relations and Policy Committee. Reese.
Item 12.01 is a report from the Collingswood Board. Mr. Tabey.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick updates from Collingswood. We haven't had an official board meeting, you know, since our last meeting here, but we did have a special board meeting in reference to the bond referendum for facilities updates. The purpose of that meeting was to vote whether or not to put the bond referendum up to a community vote, and the board voted to approve that, was 7/4 to against. So that vote will take place on September 17th. For that, there's an information session tonight, I think. Is it later tonight?
It's the latest.
Yeah, yeah. And then there's one more on the 27th, 27th or 28th?
Every, yeah, every, everywhere.
Yeah, everyone, yeah. Yeah. So two more left this month, so everyone's welcome to come on out and see that. Also, just another quick update, since that last meeting, I know a couple of folks have reached out, just looking for some updates on the marching band program at the high school. If you didn't hear, the staff member who was taking on the role of marching band and jazz band director resigned from that additional duty. She's still an employee of the district, so we were, looked, you know, charged with finding someone to replace her. That was posted immediately after she resigned, which was on July 15th, and a search ensued, and hot off the press, it looks like we found somebody. That's Mr. Whitworth, right? I just saw, you know. So, so marching band is ready to roll for our high school students, so that's great news. Coming for me as a community member and as a music teacher. And that's it from Collingswood.
Thank you. Item 12.02 is the PTA liaison report. Mrs. Rotondo.
I don't think we have anything to update this time, but it'll be coming at you soon. October 1st is the next meeting. With an ice cream social on September 27th.
That was hot off the record.
Glad I can keep you all informed.
They're watching, all watching.
They're also working very hard on the calendar, because I've been getting, you know, updates on when things are going to be, and so...
I did request an update prior to this meeting, and I'm, I'm waiting on that right now.
That's, they have...
But I'm getting an update during this meeting.
There it is.
That's what counts.
In real time. Thank you.
People watch.
They do, and they watch it back, and, hi. 12.03 is the OMACAC report. Mrs. Butchko.
I have an update. OMACAC has plans for six gym nights. The facilities request will be on our September agenda. There's also facilities requests on tonight's agenda, which is already approved, for the basketball program. And Adam will be speaking to Ms. Barnett, Ms. Bolden soon about red ribbon week. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation. OEF has not met since our last meeting, but I know that a preschool grant that was requested has been fulfilled over the summer, and I know there are a lot of, we're looking at venues and dates for in-person fundraisers to do during the year to raise some funds, so excited about that. So more at the next meeting.
Did you have the scholarship?
I'm not sure if I did at the last meeting. Would you, would you like to?
She's got the scholarship. We only have scholarship.
Sorry, but I don't believe I did, no.
She's starting at Temple in, actually, last week. She's an athlete.
So, just to put it on a microphone, Reagan Stotts was given the OEF scholarship, and she will be starting at Temple very soon.
Temple. She's going to be a field athlete for the preseason, right?
Congratulations, Reagan. Item 12.05 are regulations up for first reading, so there are five here. 1530 is equal employment opportunities. 2200 is curriculum content. 2260 is equity in school and classroom practices complaints. 2423 bilingual education, and 7610 is about vandalism. Item 12.06, we had noticed in a revision of a regulation that the regulation didn't make sense, and the policy that went along with it didn't, it was about honoring student achievement. It's not that, OPS does not honor student achievement. I think they do an incredible job doing so, but since we are now a pre-K to 5 school, we do not have a valedictorian, soliditorium, we don't have honor rolls in the same way. They're honored in the HAWK awards, subjects for high achievement in 5th grade, a promotion, and things like that. So we are moving to abolish these, this policy and regulation because it's not relevant. Item 12.07, there is the HIV report, and there are none, so we are seeking approval for items 12.01 through 12.06.
So...
I want to just ask you a question or make a comment. So for Section 12.05, no objection to any of it, but it keeps referring to the affirmative action plan, and I was scouring it to read what the plan is, and there's a definition, but it's circular, and it literally says the affirmative action plan refers to the affirmative action plan of the school.
So, I can put on which regulation I refer to, sorry.
So, I jotted them down on my paper and left it, it's, I think it's, I think it's, the first three really kind of go there, because even the complaint process refers to it, so the complaint's about a violation, a suspected violation of the affirmative action plan. So I guess what was tricky for me is that I didn't have the plan. I assume it's a fine plan, but I just didn't have it to refer to. I mean, the content makes sense, and I'll proceed with a yes, but I just think that having then, and I understand that a policy that has, like, the glossary is there, I think it was kind of circular, I, I could have deduced that the affirmative action plan referred to the affirmative action plan, and I just wanted to know a little bit more about the plan. So maybe for future discussion, if we can, like, include some context as to what it is that we know. All right, this, there is validity that this complaint should go through this process because this was a violation of this plan, if that makes sense. I know I'm not kind of talking in this...
I can't put a mic on, but I can reference, I can, for everyone else, it's, somebody's got a shirt on.
It's 2200, and it's referenced at least on page 1 under B definitions, number 2, affirmative action plan, means the affirmative action plan for the school and classroom practices. Just to give context of where we are, I have not done a deep dive into our policies and regulations to see if, you're saying you did, and you were not able to find it?
So, yeah, I saw the same definition, and I thought to myself, well, that's not really helpful. I think as a reader, I, I knew that much. I didn't see anything that says what the actual plan itself is. I get the policy, and I think the corresponding policies revolved around it makes sense.
So I have, I'm sorry.
Do you, go ahead.
Yeah, so the affirmative action education equity policies is policy 1140. So it's listed on our website under 1140. I agree that it would make sense to do it under Board Docs, too, but it is on our website as policy that was updated, revised in April of this year. So it is on there.
And I'll also add, a quick search, 2260 is the affirmative action program for school and classroom practices, so that...
Other one's more related to the employee complaint process, and one was for students.
Got it, got it.
That's what I think the difference was.
Thank you.
All right. On a roll call, please. I'm sorry, no, motion. Motion to approve the regulations in 12.05 and the 12.06.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions from board members on this? On a roll call, please.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko.
Yes. Section 13, this is our second public comment section, so this is for any items that you wish to bring before the board, so please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Thank you.
You require no introduction.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Delaw. I live at 23 Newton Avenue.
Use the mic, Joe. That way the people watching in here.
Your audience at home can hear you.
Oh, my God.
At least your back is.
I, I, I've been thinking about how to phrase this, but our sending agreement with Collingswood is, is what, 100 years old? Something like that? I don't know. I had a great uncle graduate '26, and he remembered people from that time, so I would say it's 100 years old. Collingswood seems to be losing their way at the high school. That's being polite. Has the board considered forming an exploratory committee for a different sending arrangement with another district?
Not formally.
No. Do they at any time consider, will consider that?
I, things, yeah, I mean, of course, things are discussed, yeah. Our, we renegotiated our contract with the middle school in 2020, so it started in 2023, I believe, right, our middle school?
2018, 19 was the first year, and we just re-upped.
Right, so we're, yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's all I'll just, because it is, it's, it's a, it's a little disconcerting when I talk to people. Neighbor across the street is not sending their child to the high school this year. Makes me wonder why.
Is it appropriate for me to ask if there's something that we can discuss more formally? Not in this meeting, but in a different type of session or setting?
Yes. So in your email, I would like to have a retreat for the board at some point this fall, and that would be the appropriate time we could discuss.
Right, that's it.
Who else? Mr. Scher.
I'll use the mic properly. I know. My name is Adam Scher. I live at 18 West Beachwood Avenue. My... My... I don't think the high school has lost its way. I do think the school... The community is very disconcerted about the high school, and that makes me sad. I'm still actually an employee. I do the voice for the basketball, so I know how good it can be because when you're in that gym and the kids are excited and playing, it still has the same feeling, and I just wish we could recoup that. My daughter's had a wonderful time for their three and four years because my daughter was one of the last ones that graduated from ninth grade here over there, and it was wonderful. I'm actually worried about what happens to us if the bond referendum fails and things are bad at Collingswood because we are linked to Collingswood, for better or for worse, right? At least for the next three or four years because the contract is that far, right? So you've upped for, I'm guessing, five years, starting in 2023, so we're two years into a five-year contract, so three more years. And my worry is because so much seems to be wrapped up in that referendum, how are we protecting ourselves and our kids if the referendum fails and things are dire? That's what I'm worried about. And again, this isn't a question. This is just a statement because I believe that a strong school is the bedrock of a community, which is why even though my kids are done, I'm still here. And so that's what I would like to express to y'all to be thinking about for the next year because, and I'm not going to lie, I think it's going to fail because I think so many people are angry, and unfortunately, when the social media anger starts, it's hard to stop it, right? We've seen it. It's not just Collingswood, it's America. Your son tells me that social media is the worst thing that's ever happened to the United States of America, and sometimes I think he's right, even though I'm on social media all the time. So you're not allowed to use it, okay? So I just want to implore, like, the kids are what matters, right? I mean, all this stuff that you see in the retrospect, I mean, it matters, but the kids are what matter. Sort of like what you said, like, let's not let the paperwork get in the way of kids and their success. So I'm just saying, let's not let a fight politically over a referendum affect our kids. So I don't know how we do that because we only have one voice, right? I mean, which could be against everything, and it would have been seven to three instead of seven... Or six to three instead of seven to two. It's not like we can overthrow the Collingswood Board of Education. I wish they would listen to us more. I do think we have so much invested that we should have a bigger voice on the Collingswood Board. That's obviously nothing that we can do, right? That would be a big referendum. I'm not sure how that happens. I'm actually not in favor of combined districts. I'm not advocating for that either. I like the fact that we have our own district to worry about our own kids, but I think we need to think about what happens if that referendum fails because I'm sad and think... I mean, I think it's going to. And I could be wrong. I'm wrong a lot. Just ask my wife, who might be watching. Hi. But yeah, so that's what I just wanted to talk about. Let's not let the kids suffer from people... Adults arguing.
Excuse me. Adam, incidentally, the Collingswood Board is 11 members, nine Collingswood, one Oakland, one Woodland.
And you're not allowed to vote on some things, too, anyway, right? I've watched those movies, you're like, "I'm not allowed to vote on this, so I'm going to pass."
Yeah, if it only affects the elementary district, we don't vote on that.
So the referendum only affects the district?
I think not. It also includes some sports activities.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, so it is covering everything. Okay, okay. Because I did hear... You did vote on that. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. But let's think about the kids. And I would say the same thing if I ever had the guts to go and talk to Collingswood.
I was just going to say, go on social media and say, "It's for the kids."
I always do. I always do, but I'm not going on in the wood because that's toxic.
I hear you. I hear you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Emily Klinky. I live at 67 Hillcrest Avenue. I wrote and sent a letter to Mrs. Coleman and Dr. McDowell. I'm not going to read the letter because it's pretty lengthy, but I just wanted to pull out a couple pieces of information. My son is a recent graduate of OPS, and he's going to the middle school this September. So a couple of my friends in town who also have children in the district and going to the middle school and the high school kind of sat down and talked about our concerns regarding crossing the White Horse Pike. Just some facts that we have in here, some statistics, is that nationwide pedestrian injury is the second-leading cause of injury related to death for children... Related, excuse me, to injury and death for children ages five to 14. New Jersey has the highest pedestrian death rate in the country, according to a recent five-year study. Some things that we thought the board could consider would be where the crosswalk sign is between the CVS and Collings Avenue. It's called a rectangular... Let me see. Rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's just like a fancy word for adding lights to that yellow diamond shape on both sides, so when they press it, then it lights up and it alerts, you know, the drivers. Something along those lines with the statistics. According to a 2022 research study that was done by Rowan University, Rutgers University, and the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the use of those RRFBs, is their nickname, improved driver yielding rates by 92%, which is pretty impressive for a very small investment. I want to say the... I don't have it written down in the letter, but I believe the cost was less than $5,000 to do something like that. It could potentially even be less if you're just adding lights to the existing signs. We also are interested in the potential of employing a crossing guard to guide the children across the Pike during the morning and afternoon peak hours. This comes from the New Jersey Crossing Guard Manual. It says crossing guards are an essential part of safety. They help children make safe street crossings, demonstrate safe crossing procedures, and contribute to more children walking and biking to school because the presence of crossing guards reassures parents and children of the safety of the school route. In addition, it encourages children to be more active and really reduces congestion and traffic pollution and all of the things that are ubiquitous on the White Horse Pike. So again, my name's Emily Klinky. I signed this. My friend who couldn't be here also signed it. I won't speak for her, but it is written here, and I can leave this with you or you have a digital copy.
Thank you. For what it's worth, I have also brought up lights on that crosswalk sign. It is something that we need to... It's a... That area is Collingswood, so it's something that we need to discuss with the Collingswood Police.
Actually, I think you need to discuss it with the State Highway Department.
It's a state road or a county road?
It's a state road.
It's a state road, so it's state, New Jersey.
And probably if we discuss it with the state, by the time your son graduates, we may have something. So the next kids will be thankful for that. That is a really good idea. Hadent Township has a number of them. Hadentville, I think, has some, too. And they do attract your attention.
Yeah. I like them because you can press the button for the lights to appear. They have them across the building where my... Across the street from where my mom lives in Hadent Township. And I, you know, it draws more attention to the sign, for sure, that there's someone crossing there.
So would we advise a next step or is it a petition? Is it a...
So we're going to go directly to the police department first in terms of the appropriate channels, and then push pretty hard to get them to elevate this to that next level with a direct recommendation, and then we will report back, and so I'll do that tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Question on the top, and I think we've probably discussed this before, but I can't remember, and this would be a Collingswood thing at the intersection of Collings and White Horse Pike. Is there a crossing guard in the morning and afternoon?
There is, and the hours have been extended.
I know we've talked about it, but I could not remember it. All right.
Yeah, I want to thank Dr. McDowell for this because I've noticed that they were not... They're there, but they're not there when the middle and high school students are dismissed. They're there when the elementary students are dismissed, and so they have revised their hours. So thanks, Dr. McDowell, for that because that is something that we did recommend, and they changed, and so, yeah. And there is someone there in the morning also. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right. We adjourn. Thank you all.